Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the mayor's briefing for July 5, 2022, to order, and I present the Chief of Staff, Mike Peace, will be taking over for the mayor. Mike, you got the floor.
Thank you, President LaFlam, and I appreciate the opportunity to brief you on just two orders that have come forward. The mayor was not able to make the briefing, so he appreciates your consideration on these orders. The first order is an appropriation of $335,649.20 to the following-named MIS accounts. First one's TV production director salary of $160,649.20. The other account is a part-time Chigbee TV staff salary account of $75,000. And the third is the Chigbee TV facilities and equipment account for $100,000, for the total of $335,649.20. The funds are being taken out of the reserve account for the PEG access cable account. That will leave us about $899,114 left in the account. That PEG account is the account we receive from Charter and Spectrum.
The gentleman said he can't hear.
It's, the mic's on. I must not be talking into it correctly.
Just bring it a little closer, Mike. It's really hard.
So the amount left in the PEG account will be $899,114.91. The request is, annual request, we do this every year because the salaries and the expenses are being paid out of the PEG account. We have to wait until July 1, beginning of the fiscal year, to then place the funds in the account. And this is for two production, TV production director salaries. The part-time staff are the individuals that help us at all the meetings. And then the equipment account, I think, is self-explanatory. That's for our need for additional equipment. So if there are any questions on this request, again, it's an annual request. Thank you for your consideration.
Clarify, that's two positions. Nobody's making $160,000. There's two people involved.
That's correct. There are two salaries, two salaries in the first account.
Yeah. There's two people, Mr. Buckley and Mr. Woodford.
Yes, that is correct.
Are the people involved in that $160,649.20. It's two people.
Correct. That's not one salary.
You look at it, $160,000, and you're going to say, wow, where's that? Who's making that kind of money?
I know.
And it's, that's not the case. It's, that's two salaries.
Yeah, the line item probably should read director salaries with an I-E-S on the end, but that's the way it is in Munis, so we're just following Munis.
You did the same thing last year, and I asked the same question last year as I did this year. So I, for the new people here and people who forgot, it's two jobs for that $160,000.
Okay, thank you, and appreciate your consideration on Mayor's Order 1. Mayor's Order 2, you're hereby notified that I've appointed Barbara Galendo of Chigbee as the registrar of voters. The appointment is requested, and we ask your confirmation on the appointment. This is a replacement for Gina Sardika, who retired on this position. Barbara's been with our registrar of voters division for quite some time. I won't say how many years, but she's very familiar with the operations and how the registrar's office works, and she meets the correct requirements to run that office and help us through our elections and our registration of voters and our passports and all the other activities that the office has to do. I don't know if there's any questions?
No.
I think you all know Barbara. She's very conscientious and hardworking. And those are the only two orders I had. The mayor did give me a number of items to update the city council on. The first, as always, is our COVID numbers. We still have 32 deaths reported. There are now 71 open cases, which is down from our case total last, last year. So that is, I don't have the exact number from last time, but that is down. And it's somewhat difficult to determine if that number's accurate, because everyone's using the home test kits right now. And with the home test kits, people don't always tell you if they have COVID or not, so the case number is not that reliable. Our vaccination rate has not changed. It's still at 66% of eligible individuals. Our senior rate is still at 89% of eligible individuals. And children from the ages of 5 to 11 are still at 38%. None of the rates have changed. And we do still continue to encourage people to get vaccinated, as it will protect you from severe symptoms and possible hospitalization. One item of information for you is that we do have rapid COVID tests, the 15-minute COVID tests available. Individuals who would like a test can come to the City Hall, front door on Front Street, and pick up tests if they so desire. I believe there's one or two tests per individual. So those are available here at City Hall. The mayor wanted to thank all the elected officials, all the department heads, and all the employees who participated in neighborhood meetings. He thought they were very productive and really appreciated all the city councilors who attended, where there were good discussions, and the department heads were able to take notes on issues and concerns, and we'll be addressing those. Some of them have already been resolved, and we'll continue to address those issues as we go forward. We're still asking for people to fill out the Open Meeting Litigation Fund questionnaire on the City Hall website, City Chigbee. We want to use those funds the best way possible. And we also want to thank all the city councilors. And the financial team appreciates all the work the city councilors did on the budget. We were able to get the budget passed, and I think your questions and your concerns helped us prioritize spending and helped us through the budget process, and appreciate all the work done on that. The American Junior Golf Association, sometimes called the AJGA, is going to have their tournament starting tomorrow in Chigbee. This is pretty prestigious tournament. A lot of the participants go on to become professional golfers and join the professional golfing tour, so you can see some of the younger golfers, if you want, out there golfing before they become pros. There's 96 participants in this year's tournament, and the participants are from all over the world. So that starts tomorrow at 7:00 a.m. at the Country Club. We also wanted to make a request to the city councilors, if possible. Councilor Dobus had filed, and the city council had passed the home rule petition request to separate the precincts into subprecincts. There's four subprecincts that we need approved by the state legislature, and Representative Joe Wagner has filed that request. It's been slowly moving through the subcommittees, but we're a little concerned about the time right now. The state has to approve that and get that back to us in time for our mailings, and the mailing must be done 30 days before the primary. So we have to get the mailing in people's hands by August 6, which does not give us a lot of time between now and August 6 to prepare the mailings and make sure we get the appropriate precincts allocated to individuals. So if you could help, help us by calling our state senators, or your state senator, to have them move on that request and get that home rule petition completed, we'd appreciate it. It should be pretty self-explanatory, and I don't believe there's any contest, there's no controversy with regard to that. So we'd like to get that in place, so the city clerk and the registrar of voters can get those mailings out. And finally, there is a update on the streets and the summer construction for our road program. Columbus Street wasn't active for a while. We were waiting for some materials for the water main services, and we did receive those materials right now, so the Columbus Street project is a full reconstruction of the road and installation of the water main. That's going to start or has started already. For safety improvements, sidewalk installation and an island installation at Mount Common and Langivan Street were completed. Sidewalk and crosswalk installations at Moro Drive and Litwin Lane are completed. The linear park and sidewalk and the traffic island at Front Street and Cabot Street are almost completed. We're waiting to install signage and pavement markings. And the installation of this long-awaited speed tables on Front Street is in the final stage of contracting, and we have not got a firm date from the contractor, but we expect that will begin sometime in July, sometime this month. So we're looking forward to seeing how that works. The resurfacing projects at Prospect Street, Syrick Street, Old Farm Road, Amherst Street, and Wit Nav have all been completed. So I know Ward 3, Councilor Delmarino Lopez was, will be happy about that. She's been advocating for those repavements. The lower portion of McKinstry Ave, from Boyleston Street to Meadow Street, including the intersection of Meadow Street, will be paved hopefully today. They started, it was scheduled to start today, weather permitting, and the paving began at 5:00 a.m. to try to decrease the impact of traffic on those intersections. Resurfacing sections of East Main Street and Belcher Street are underway, and work on sections of Springfield Street, Exchange Street, and Perkins Street. The contract's completed, and we should be getting work on those in a couple weeks. Also, Granby Road-Buckley Boulevard project, the resurfacing of Granby Road from David Bridge to Grattan Street and Grattan Street up to Bay State Road is a resurfacing project on the two intersections of Prospect Street and Buckley Boulevard. So that project is due to begin milling of the road to prepare it for repavement, starting on Monday, July 11. And the milling will start at the David Bridge and go up Granby Road. And finally, Fuller Road. The utility work has all been completed along the road corridor, and they have made way for widening and reconstruction of Fuller Road. The base pavement and intermittent courses have been installed from, on Fuller Road from Memorial Drive to Haynes Circle, and they'll start milling the balance of Fuller Road either next week or towards the end of July. And they expect to have that paving completed in early August. So appreciate your consideration, the two orders, and hope you have a very good meeting tonight.
Mike, we have a couple of questions, some people's.
Okay. Thank you, President LaFlam. You mentioned, Michael, Prospect Street and Buckley Boulevard. Will that begin July 11?
Prospect Street and Buckley Boulevard, there's milling of Granby Road at the David Bridge going up the hill is supposed to start July 11. So I believe that's part of the project. I don't know when exactly what date that's scheduled for, depending on the weather.
Okay, so I just want to make sure my constituents know that it's on a work order, Buckley Boulevard, Prospect Street, and it should be done this year, is that correct?
Between the two intersections, yeah, it should be done this year. This summer, they're working on that project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? If I may, I have a question for you, Mike. So, Mike, I have a little bit of concern. I put a call into the DBW, Liz over at DBW. You just said July 11 is going to be the resurface of Granby Road?
That's when the milling of the street is supposed to start, yes.
Okay, I did notice that they already marked and started cutting. My concern is, a year ago, I discussed, or maybe even longer, and I reminded her, maybe two weeks ago, we need crosswalks put in on Granby Road. We had many, many meetings with people coming here complaining about crosswalks. If we're going to redo that road and we're going to do crosswalks, now's the time to do it, not later. So I have some concerns of looking where we're going to put them. We need to put some in. So if we can talk to the mayor and her about Liz, I mean, she might have forgot, but I just concerned about July 11, which is next Monday.
Right, and the contract's already been finalized, so we're going to have to get that figured out pretty quick.
Yeah, well.
I'll request tomorrow.
We've asked for this, residents asked for this over a year and a half ago, when that person almost, by Hanks' right, almost got it. So now's the time before we have to cut it up again to do it. So if you could just look into it with her, I'll try to touch base, but if we can make sure something gets done, even if it costs a little bit more, I think it needs to be done.
Okay.
Just keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
One more question, Frank.
Go ahead, Gary.
Okay, Gary LeBrie. Hey, Mike, I heard you mention Bay State on the Grattan Street, but I think you meant Granby Road to Bay State. I just want to correct that, that they're not paving anything on Grattan Street. It's Granby Road to Bay State.
I'll check and make sure the note I had has Bay State Road written on it, but I think you're right.
Yeah, it goes right to the light.
It doesn't intersect with Grattan at all.
Right. I think you're correct. I'll check on that as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the July 5, 2022 city council meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now I'd like to take a moment of silence for those that protect us home and abroad. Okay, our city clerk will be on Zoom, and the city clerk, could you please call the roll call?
President LaFlam.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Tillotson.
Here.
Zagarowski.
Here.
McAuliffe.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Valkir.
Here.
Krampis.
Here.
Dobus.
Here.
Kuchain.
Here.
LeBrie. LeBrie. Gary LeBrie. Penny Attacustella.
Here.
I'm here. Sorry.
Thirteen present.
Thank you. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chigbee is broadcasting live and for future broadcasts this meeting on Chigbee TV. Is anyone in the audience video or audio taping this meeting? Please state your name and reason for doing so. No, it's taping. Hold on a minute. We'll be right with you. We'll be right with you. Can I get, Jim?
Motion.
Oh, you want to talk? Okay, I'm sorry. We will move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. There will be no discussion of collective bargaining or personal attack. Is anyone here for public input? If so, state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you, I'm sorry. Apologize.
Okay. My name is Herb Gruzy, and I live at 39 Hillman Street here in Chigbee. This is what I would call the Chapter Four in the saga of the non-enforcement of the city codes. Primarily, these deal with the quality of life matters, but also, in some cases, there are also safety issues, such as having to step into the street because uncleared sidewalks, or having to step into the street because of overgrowth that blocks the sidewalks. That is only, not in the case of individuals who are handicapped, or possibly women pushing carriages, but people in general. I would assume that if something is noted to the city and they do not respond on it and do not enforce codes that are in effect, that they might be liable for a lawsuit. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to say they, I'm saying might. Okay, I've spoken in four of the last five meetings, starting on the third, and I have to ask a rhetorical question tonight. Please don't take any offense to it, it's not intended to be critical, but rather to get some information. Now, while the city councilors, you people here, and there's what, seven here, and there're usually 12?
There's, the rest are on Zoom, sir.
The rest are on?
They're on Zoom. They're hearing you.
Oh, they're on Zoom. Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
All right, so while you members of the city council are paid to be here on Tuesday nights, we as taxpayers are not. This is our own dime, our own time. But we're here because we want to voice our concerns over a matter that we can't really resolve without your assistance. I know that in cases of the media-covered issues, like the Slate Road issue and the possible second truck stop near Burnett Road, you do follow these up with meetings, because it's media-covered. However, I do have to ask if after three minutes of being up here, any work is done beyond this? Have you done any research? Have you talked to any department heads or anything? I must say sadly that after these four meetings, I don't feel I'm any further along than I was after the May 3 meeting, sadly. And I wonder whether people who have been up here besides me have felt they've gotten any satisfaction. Again, not being critical, but asking for your input. So I want to thank you for your time, as always, look forward to hearing from you. I did want to mention one last thing. Councilor McAuliffe, who's probably on Zoom, said on Springfield paper on June 27, that he would rather have conversation than confrontation. I have to agree totally with him, and I hope that's what we arrive at. Thank you again.
Thank you.
I came tonight because I went to two of the spring meetings, the Ward 9 and the Ward 6, and what became alarming is that there seems to be a disconnect between what the citizens perceive and want for our city and what maybe the elected officials perceive and want for this city. And at Ward 9 and at Ward 6, the issue of traffic came up, and I know Memorial Drive is like, you know, Stafford Motor Speedway, and I think Burnett Road is the same way, and Fuller Road before the construction. So people are really concerned for the quality of life and safety, which everyone keeps saying, who are elected officials, that they're also concerned about. But it seems like when the citizens bring it up, we're kind of talked at that we don't know what's best for us, and that's very concerning. And I have to wonder, because the same comment came up in both meetings about water, because, you know, there were updates on the sewer separation projects. And in both meetings, the comments were made from the mayor, how we should just, because we've got great water rates in Chigbee, use water to abandon. You know, we shouldn't be worried about conserving. And I thought, wow, what poor stewards of the land we are if that's how we feel, that we should just be using the water. And the reason we've got sewer separation projects is because pollution that was put into the waterways of the Chigbee and Connecticut River that we're at the crossroads with, that's why we have to take care of it now, because we weren't concerned about the water. And I'm just going to say, Flint, Michigan, we all need to be concerned about the water. And the last thing that I want to bring up, and I'm hoping that you can steer me to where the vote was taken, because the comment was made that there is a cap the vote was taken, because the comment was made that there is a cap on the number of retail cannabis operations that there can be in Chicabe, a cap of four. I'd like to know where that vote was, because I've actually looked at the Cannabis Control Commission, and they list every community, and it does say whether there is a retail or a license cap in place for that community, and none is listed for Chicabe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input from Zoom? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to return to the regular order of business. Motion made in second to turn, return to the regular order of business. Okay. Clerk Patel, do we have any minutes?
June 24th, uh, sorry, June 21st, 2022.
Counselor McAuliffe.
Motion to accept the minutes from June 21st and place them on file.
Motion made in second to receive the June 21st minutes. Any comments? All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. Okay, mayor's orders.
Okay, we have a communication.
Yeah, one communication. Go ahead there, Keith.
You are hereby notified that this day I have appointed Frank Waron the 3rd as Building Commissioner for the city of Chicabe.
Effective May 30th, 2022. Counselor McAuliffe.
Motion to have the communication be received and placed on file.
Motion made in second that the communication be received and placed on file. On the motion.
I just want to congratulate Mr. Born.
Okay, let me just get the file out first. What did you say, Joel? You all set?
No comment on it.
Okay. Counselor Costello.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate Mr. Born on the new position. He's been doing it for a while, and we appreciate his experience.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Mayor's order one.
Order that the sum of $335,649.20 be inherently appropriate to the following named MIS accounts. TV production director salary, $160,649.20. Part-time Chicabe TV staff salary, $75,000. Chicabe TV facilities equipment, $100,000, for a total of $335,649.20. Centaimes be taken from the available funds and the receipts reserved for appropriation peg access cable account.
Counselor Brooks.
Make a motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion.
On the motion, this is the annual request from the mayor. We have access to PEG funds, which are public educational or governmental funds that we can use from our agreement with Charter of Communications, and this will help fund certain salary across different lines.
Thank you. Counselor Tillotson.
Yeah, I just want to clarify for the public that the $160,649.20 is two positions within that department. But the way it reads, TV production director salary, it sounds like it's for all, just for one, but it's for two salaries. The director and I assume it's probably his assistant. So I just wanted the public to know, so when they read it in the newspaper, they'll know that that's two positions, not one position.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zgarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pennyette Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Next, we have the appointment of Barbara Galindo as the registrar of voters.
Counselor Tillotson.
Uh, motion to approve this evening.
Motion made in second that the mayor's order be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
The reason why I say that is our rule indicates that we have the opportunity to appoint if we feel that the person being appointed is qualified and meets the criteria, and I'm sure that's the case because the mayor made the appointment. Barbara's been there a long time as an assistant. She knows the ins and outs of the office. She's only a phone call away from the former registrar, so I just think that rather than lose her to some other community, I think we ought to go forward with her tonight, rather than make her come down to City Hall and go through the process of an interview and so forth. Anybody who's been in that office knows that she's a very pleasant lady and easy to work with, so I hope we can approve her tonight.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Hold on, please. Counselor Costello.
I just want to say that the, in working with the registrar of voters' office for the last couple of months, it's been a pleasure. Her people skills are outstanding, and she certainly knows the job. We are very fortunate to have Barbara as a member of our team. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zgarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pennyette Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And she's been approved.
We have a favorable report from the License Committee for an application for Hockers and Peddlers license for the very best soft cream ice cream.
Counselor Brooks.
Motion made that the committee report be received and passed through this evening.
Motion made in second that the License Committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, this is for a vendor for soft ice cream. The police department report came back with a positive query, so there were no issues with this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the License Committee for an auto detail license for everything window tint located at 450B New Ludlow Row.
Counselor Brooks.
Motion made that the License Committee report be received and passed this evening with restrictions.
Motion made in second that the License Committee report be received and passed this evening with restrictions. On the motion.
I'll read the restrictions in. No outside storage. Require certificate of occupancy before license can be released. No night work. And they are responsible for contacting engineering for an appropriate screen number. And the final parking was nine outside, including one employee and a customer, and one of the eight must be a handicapped accessible spot that meets the state standard.
Thank you. Any other comments? Shane, could you just put the hours of operations, please?
I couldn't. Uh, hours of operation, Monday through Friday, nine to five, Saturday, nine to one, no Sunday operating hours.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
A favorable report from the License Committee for an application for an alteration of a Class II auto repair license, change in corporate officers, reliable auto sales and services.
Counselor Brooks.
Motion that the License Committee report be received and remain on file as the applicant was unavailable that evening.
Motion made in second that the applicant be, License Committee report be received and the application stay on file. On the motion.
He was unable to attend that evening. He'll be on the June, or July 15th, rather, meeting agenda.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes.
We have a favorable report with a motion to postpone from the License Committee for an auto repair license for Kinz Auto Repair 2 located at 1098 Chicabe Street.
Counselor Brooks.
Same course, Mr. President.
Motion made in second that the License Committee report be received, and you want this one held to the next meeting, right?
Yes.
On the motion.
Uh, unavailable, and we will entertain his application at the July 15th meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes.
We have a favorable License Committee report for an application for an auto detailing license for family auto sales and repair located at 920A Meadow Street.
Counselor Brooks.
Motion that the License Committee report be received and the license granted this evening with restrictions.
Motion made in second to License Committee report be received and the license approved this evening with restrictions. On the motion.
On the motion, the one requirement placed on the potential licensee was the inclusion of amending lease agreement to reflect the detailing work that will go on, will go on there. That was not included in the original lease agreement. There were two out of three different areas of expertise he wanted to include but had omitted detailing that's now on there. The hours of operation are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, nine to seven, Saturday, nine to one, Sunday, 11 to two, but it's been reflected to only include office work. There'll be no cleanup or detailing occurring. This will be just simply for paperwork to catch up, to get customers billing and the like prepared.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
A favorable report from the License Committee for an application for a Class II license for family auto sales located at 920A Meadow Street.
Counselor Brooks.
Same course, Mr. President.
Motion made in second that the License Committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, the, there are no differing hours of operation. Again, there was the requirement that only office work occur on Sundays. Total number of vehicles, eight, two inside, six outside, two employee and three customer outside, inclusive of the three, was in a handicap accessible spot consistent with state standards.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the License Committee for an application for an auto repair auto body license for family auto sales and repair located at 920A Meadow Street.
Counselor Brooks.
Same course.
Motion made in second that the License Committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, the operating hours are the same, Monday through Friday, nine to seven, Saturday, nine to one, Sunday, 11 to two for office work only. We did put an additional requirement that since there would be a considerable amount of welding that would occur, he did apply for and receive fire department approval to have a quote-unquote hot works license and permit from the fire department, so this one's all set to go.
Thank you very much. Counselor Crapitz.
Yeah, I just did want to add this one and the previous ones. The Sunday hours are for office work and for, you know, going around and cleaning up stuff outside, not working on cars or anything like that, just kind of like if he needs to trim hedges or cut the grass, you know, that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
A favorable report from the zoning committee for an application for a special permit under Chapter 275-53 for the purpose of a parking lot for the use of businesses and residents of 333 Front Street located at 28 Grape Street.
Counselor Valkir.
Motion that the favorable zoning subcommittee report be received and that the special permit be approved this evening with original conditions.
Motion made in second that the zoning committee report be received and approved this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, this is a special permit for the purpose of a parking lot for use of business and residents at 377 Front Street. It's located at 28 Grape Street, and this is an existing parking lot, and this is basically the transfer of this parking lot to a new owner, and this is a permit to run with the land.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got to call and roll on these.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zgarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Out of chair.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pennyette Costello.
Yes.
Pennyette Costello.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one out of chair.
And the motion passes.
We have a favorable report with a motion to deny from the zoning committee for an application for a special permit under Chapter 275-52B13 for the purpose of an animal kennel located at 162 Empire Street.
Thank you. Counselor Valkir.
Uh, motion that the favorable zoning subcommittee report be received and that the motion is denied this evening.
Motion made in second that the zoning committee report be received and the applicant be denied this evening. On the motion.
Uh, on the motion, this is for a purpose of an animal kennel license, four pet dogs located on 162 Empire Street. And we had the buddy neighbors speak at our meeting, and they were not in favor because of the parking lot dogs. They were not in favor of this, so therefore we're saying that this should be denied because it's not favorable to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zgarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Out of chair.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
I'm sorry, can we just verify, are we voting in approval, or are we moving for a denial right now?
Yes, yes, to deny. Yes, we'll deny the license.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you very much. Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pennyette Costello.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one out of chair.
And the motion passes to deny.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for an application for a special permit under Chapter 275-58C4 for the purpose of transferring a liquor license from the current owner to the new owner located at 300 Carew Street. Applicant Tanya P. Carty.
Counselor Valkir.
Uh, motion that the favorable zoning subcommittee report be received and the transfer liquor license be granted this evening.
Motion made in second that the zoning committee report be received and a special permit granted this evening. On the motion.
Uh, on the motion, this is an application for the purpose of transferring a liquor license from current owner to a new owner located at 300 Carew Street. And this, we voted favorable for this and also to be in compliance with our building and fire and life safety requirements by the city, and this is a permit to run with the land.
Thank you. Counselor Crapitz.
Yeah, this is for the Atlas Club. I haven't received any calls or complaints about the special permit request, so I'm in favor of it passing tonight. And if there is an issue, we can certainly, you know, call them in because it is a special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zgarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Out of chair.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Abstain.
Pennyette Costello.
Yes.
Eleven yes, one out of chair, one abstention.
And the motion passes.
We have a favorable report from the zoning committee for an application for a special permit under chapter 275 dash fifty-nine C-eleven for the purpose of adding three new drive-up self-storage buildings to the existing seven outside storage units located at 499 Montgomery Street, U-Hold Storage. Jeff Nato.
Counsel Balakir.
Motion at the favorable zoning subcommittee report be received and that the special permit be granted this evening with conditions.
Motion made and second that the zoning committee report be received and a special permit granted this evening. On the motion.
This is a motion to approve for the purpose of adding three new drive-up self-storage buildings with the U-Hold complex. So we had, we had quite a, quite a tale with this one. We had some issues with Jeff Nato not showing up, extensions, things of that nature. So finally Jeff showed up and we had some input from our planning director. So we had the motion to approve the special permit, subject to the conditions on the zone change being approved and SBRAC conditions being met by the applicant as evidenced by a writ communication from our planning director. And this is a permit to run with the land.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Jeff Nato came in that night. He did apologize. He had been sick. He's got some health issues going on, but in the long run, he did get it done. And they're good business for the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call please.
President Laflamme.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tillotson.
Yes.
Zagarowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Out of chair.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobis.
Yes.
Kushein.
Yes.
Labree.
Yes.
Piniak Costello.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one out of chair.
And the motion passes.
Or that the finance subcommittee meet to discuss the school department budget.
Counsel Zagarowski.
Motion made and second that the finance committee be received and placed on file.
Motion made and second that the finance committee report for the subcommittee with the school department be placed on file this evening. On the motion.
Counsel Malakir.
No, you can talk about it.
Well, all I can say is we had a meeting with the committee on this entire order for the finance in the school department. It went very well and, but it was all passed, but we, we did learn a lot from it. So I'm sure I'd like to turn this over to the makers of the order.
Counsel Dobas.
Oh, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank the finance subcommittee for holding this hearing. Thank you, Counsel Laflamme for holding it. It was a really interesting meeting. There was a lot of concern about this one and a quarter million, a lot of rumblings in social media and all that. So I'm really glad we had the meeting. I, I actually agree with the mayor after we had the meeting. The, there was some, there is, the meeting was somewhat troubling though to me a little bit because the school department couldn't really explain to us what they were going to spend the one and a quarter million on. You know, he mentioned maybe some social programs in elementary schools and he said that there'd be a smoother rollout of the preschools, but he couldn't give us specific expenses that he would spend the one and a quarter on. And there was some debate between the auditor and the school department over how much money the school department has. And so it was a little bit concerning, but I appreciate our auditor showing up and giving us the, the true figures. So, you know, I do agree with the mayor after the, after the meeting. And my message to the teachers in the city is they should be focusing on the money the school department has. And I think that, you know, the public needs to understand that. But it was an interesting meeting and I appreciate the council for, for having it. Hopefully we can continue to look into this issue and, and some other issues in the school department that might affect the city. You know, obviously the school committee manages the schools, but you know, when it, when there's some crossover, you know, it's good that the council gets caught up on these issues. Thank you.
Counsel Tillotson.
Basically it was about the one and a quarter million dollars as to, with the mayor cut from their budget. And they were quite upset about it. They came in and one evening with several teachers concerned about it. But when, I think most of them, when they left, when they realized how much money they really had in reserve, and it was several million dollars that they hadn't spent, they, I think, agreed that, not publicly, but I think they understood that they could live this year where nothing would get cut. The forty-five new positions they were talking about would be funded on, with the existing funds. The, it's, the problem lies now is in the future because the money they got the, from the federal government is not going to last forever. And when it's gone, if they put it all into people, we're going to have some issues there as to what we keep and what does not, what is not kept. But if they put it into things that are truly needed, it's like maybe air conditioning in some of the buildings and some real construction work that needs to be done because several, several of the buildings are older. It won't have such an impact in three or four years on our budget. But it was a good give and take. And I think that people who came, were not sure what to do after they heard that the monies that the school department had in reserve, they, they had to agree that for this year, give the taxpayer that one and a quarter million break. And so it was, it was worth having. I agree with Counsel Laflamme for having the meeting.
Thank you. Counsel Costello.
Thank you. I want to thank the city council for voting to allow to have that meeting. It was scheduled only for forty-five minutes, but during that forty-five minute plus time, there was a lot of knowledge that was transferred from one body to another. I am disappointed that it was on the eleventh hour. I'm hoping that our budget process can improve so that we can get the budget done, not on June thirtieth, a few hours before our fiscal year begins on July first. I, I also saw an article in Mass Live where there was another twenty-two million that was discussed, apparently between the, possibly the auditor or someone in the city. So now you're talking about a total of thirty-four million dollars that was available to the school district. I hope Mr. Tillotson is correct in his analysis that the teachers understand why we did what we did. Because we did it based on the fact that there is extra money and that money has to be spent according to Sharon Riley, our auditor, because the Department of Revenue is looking at us. And she indicated that on the night of the finance subcommittee. So again, thank you for your attentiveness in regards to this budget. The school department budget is the largest, but with thirty-four million dollars, the mayor is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. President. So historically, for those of us who've been around for a little while, and certainly Mary Beth will, will know this, we've always funded education at the minimum foundation budget and then always been amenable, at least the council has always been amenable, whether it's been my time on the council or the school committee, to enhancing that process whenever possible based on the needs of the school department. In this case, we're in uncharted waters. We have a plethora of federal money that also still belongs to the taxpayers because it comes out of their paychecks and their benefits as well. And I think Counsel Tillotson makes a great point about not spending the money on expenses that will then be annualized that we might then come up against a shortfall in funding for. So one-time capital improvements are probably one of our best avenues to really take an opportunity to enhance all of our buildings and infrastructures because we don't want to annualize costs that we might be confronted with paying for later on down the line. So those are some of the things that I think came out of that meeting. There was a better understanding of what direction the council and the mayor wanted the school department to explore because they do have a real opportunity to enhance the quality of the structural and internal services of many buildings with this money. We'll never see this again. The DOR does monitor this very closely and as Sharon alluded to, there's very, there's a prescriptive reporting process that needs to occur to ensure fens are expended in a sequential way over a period of years. But that money will eventually go away. So we need to start to look at some of the things that we can knock out cost-wise prior to any of that occurring so that we're not confronted with a three or a four billion dollar shortfall in our educational budget each and every year past 2025 and 2026. So I do appreciate the, the use of the federal funds to help shore up this year's budget and I hope that they're used wisely over the course of time.
Thank you. Anyone else, if it will, the board, I'd like to say a couple of words on this. All in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Thank you. So if you remember, we had a city council meeting at the beginning, at the end of June, and we had the president of the School Teachers Association and some parents come in and teachers come in to talk. And I was concerned about them saying that the money would not be there for the, I think it was called pre-K school or whatever it was. So I did call the auditor and asked her if she can get a complete, up-to-date for the city council to review. And I met with her and to, just for the exact dollars that they did have. Because in the long run, we, we don't spend the school committee money, they do. And when the teachers came in and said that they're, you know, they needed money for supplies, they needed many other things, whether it be for education, supplies, repairs to the school, that, that has to do with the school department and not with the city council. And I think the mayor was right in what he did, putting the money hopefully towards the taxpayers, that one point two five million back to the taxpayers. So I was, I want to thank our city auditor for coming up and speaking to us and giving us the exact, somewhat of the exact figures because they still has a couple of outstanding bills that they had to pay. But other than that, there was enough money in there for this year as the, the, Mr. Morton was saying that they had the money for this year. So I want to thank her again. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and the motion passes.
It ordered that the utility subcommittee meet with EverSource and city officials to discuss issues at 357 Burnett Road.
Counsel Dobas.
Motion that the order is received and sent to the utility subcommittee for a public hearing, please.
Motion made and second that the order be received, sent to utility subcommittee for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, I guess there's some issues with EverSource gas lines and the proposed fuel storage with the Pilot Center truck stop. So I just wanted to make sure that EverSource was okay with the plans. This seems like something we should study in committee with, you know, forty thousand fuel, forty thousand gallons of fuel underground and forty-five thousand gallons of fuel above ground alongside EverSource gas lines. I know EverSource has to sign off on the project. I'd like to have a hearing just to make sure the fire chief is okay with it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
It ordered that the education subcommittee meet to discuss school department issues.
Counsel Costello.
Thank you. Motion that the order be received and referred to the education subcommittee for a public hearing.
Motion made and second that the order be received and sent to the education subcommittee for a public hearing. On the motion.
Thank you. This is a follow-up meeting to the finance subcommittee meeting that we had with the school department. Hopefully sometime in September, when school gets back into session and budgets are starting to be looked at for the upcoming year, upcoming fiscal year, we can meet with school department officials and get a handle on and have communication with money issues involving the school department. Thank you.
Counsel Dobas.
Thank you. I co-sponsored this with Counselor Costello. I know we had a really good finance committee meeting, but there's also some non-financial issues that I feel the council should be briefed on and that we should be able to give our input for. And not even just financial, but also just, you know, you know, some of the direction. I mean, I know it's the school, the school committee's responsibility to manage the budget and I'm not trying to tell them what to do at all. You know, but the, you know, the school department, you know, they talked about buying Mass Mutual. Now they're talking about Universal preschool. There's just a lot of big ideas and I, I feel it's important that the city council remain briefed on these issues. And I think that, you know, especially some of the senior counselors that, you know, I'd like to hear some of their input on some of these ideas. So that's why I'm happy to co-sponsor this and, and, you know, I want to thank Counselor Costello for co-sponsoring. Thank you.
Counsel Costello.
Thank you. As a follow-up, I believe that there should be more meetings of the education subcommittee. I think we have to stay on top of not only the financed, financial aspect, so we're not surprised by any kind of financial request, but also what Counselor Dobas is talking about is what's happening in our schools. I did have a meeting in February. We're going to have one again in September, but that's too long. We're going to have to start meeting a little bit more often. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed, and the motion passes.
It ordered that the DPW install a double-sided go slow children sign at 53 Willam Street.
Counsel Crampits.
Motion that the order be received and sent to DPW for implementation.
Motion made and second that the order be received and sent to the DPW for installation. On the motion.
Yeah, this is a constituent request and she's going to be running a daycare at that location. So we're going to put a sign there to help keep the kids safe.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Order that group homes be discussed by the public safety committee.
Counsel Costello.
Motion that the order be received and referred to the public safety committee.
Motion made and second that the order be received and sent to the public safety committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
I, I want to commend Counselor Zagarowski because he had a meeting on group homes with the public safety committee back in December. And I've been getting some calls and concerns from constituents in regards to group homes in the, in the Ward Nine area. I spoke with Counselor Zagarowski about this and I've also spoke briefly with DBW direct, I mean, excuse me, Building Director Frank Boron. And it was discussed that we possibly could have a, a meeting in regards to group homes. Counselor Zagarowski made a good point that a lot of these group homes are actually regulated by the state. And I think that's a good, that's good information for us to know. But that's something that the constituents will learn as well as other people that would be invited to the public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Counsel Brooks would help us with that. Counsel Brooks.
Yeah, let me, let me help out with this a little bit. So there are no locals ordaining or ordinances that can preclude the location of group homes. It's referred to as the Dover Amendment. It's a federal act adopted in the early seventies. And essentially the Executive Office of Health and Human Services has an overlay map and they make sure they don't saturate certain communities and/or areas of those communities with too many group homes. Now, while there might be some challenges with people accepting the fact that individuals with cognitive and developmental disabilities, acquired brain injuries, traumatic brain injuries, are those youth who are involved in DYS and DCF services, it is their right to be a part of any community that an agency sees fit. Now, there are not only agencies that run these programs. They're all, also Massachusetts runs what's consistently called state-operated facilities. And I don't think they're facilities, I think they're homes really. But all of these people, young people and older people alike who have some sort of life challenge deserve to be immersed in a community. So I get a little bit anxious when I hear that the group home discussion will be referred to public safety as there's some, as if there was some inherent threat to a community or a neighborhood's viability. I certainly will be in attendance at that meeting and I'll welcome any questions. I've been doing this type of work for the last twenty-five plus years. So it's certainly something that I'm well-versed in and am willing to have a conversation with anybody in the community about the importance and really the effectiveness of serving individuals in a community-based setting. Certainly nobody would want to suggest, I would hope, that we want to go back to the Munson State School or Belton State School environments for folks with disabilities. So I'm happy to engage in that conversation with any member of the community and help educate those folks on what we really do and how beneficial it is to have group homes embedded in the fiber of any neighborhood.
Thank you. Counsel Labree. Gary, did you want to talk?
Yes, sorry about that.
That's okay, go ahead. I see your hand.
I agree with Counselor Brooks a hundred percent on what he said. The only thing that I run into constantly is they don't actually follow all of the rules in Board of Health, building codes, things like that, parking situations. And we don't have a list, you know, that we can turn to, to get a hold of these resident managers, you know. So, you know, I've tried to visit them, the Board of Health tries to visit them. And, you know, they clean up for a little while and they go back because I believe they don't keep the same resident manager all the time. So I'd like to see that the Board of Health gets notified, the Building Department and Police Department. I know I have at least five group homes in my ward and, you know, I've had problems with three of them. And right now I'm working on issues with two of them. And they're very hard to take care of. And the neighbors do get frustrated even though they know that, you know, this, you know, is beyond our control at where they go. And these people have a right to live there and, you know, without disturbing the neighborhood though. So, you know, I'd like to have that discussion. I don't know if public safety... I don't know if public safety, as Counselor Brooks alluded to, is the proper place to have it, but if that's what we decide that this ends with the public safety, I'll be there and I'm on that committee and hopefully the people that we invite that I previously mentioned will also be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Costello, is it friendly to add the police department, the Board of Health and the building department to your order?
Yes, please.
Seeing so. Any other comments? Counsel Dobass.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate Counselor Brooks and his work and, you know, but I don't think that this is a pushback, right? Of course, group homes, you know, people in group homes, they have a right to be there, they're welcome to be there, but, you know, of course we'd be lying if we were saying that there aren't some issues around group homes in the city of Chicagoe area. Of course, there's some public safety issues. Group homes, I have several group homes in my ward as well, including in wealthy areas. Some of them are, fit in perfectly, some of them have had some problems. You know, like Counsel LeBrie said, I've also had some parking situation issues. Usually when I contacted them, the, the group home organization behind the group home, they've been more than happy to work with me, but, but sometimes, you know, there's problems, you know, ambulance visits and things like that. So, you know, it's important that we have these committees. I don't think sending it to public safety is insulting. I think it's just a community meeting, you know, it's important that we go over these issues. So I thank Counselor Costello for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Well, I have one more comment.
Oh, go ahead. Counsel Brooks, go ahead. I'm sorry.
And this does touch a board with me, but Counsel Dobass, including wealthy areas, it's because people who are afflicted with all sorts of disabilities are actually allowed to live in quote-unquote wealthy areas. When we cite group homes, we try to do it in typical neighborhoods to provide for a typical experience that somebody with some sort of disability can have. So I do think that public safety has a negative connotation. I will tell you that there is not a vendor in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who is going to notify and otherwise legally bound to do so on somebody's level of sex offense status that we're putting a group home in. We notify the abutters in most instances, but we also run into the NIMBY attitude, not in my backyard. So we are not required to notify any municipality that we're starting to explore the creation of a group home in a neighborhood. And I'm happy to relitigate all of this at the public safety meeting without belaboring an extended dismeeting, but it is something that we need to work extremely hard at having a better understanding of because there are so many preconceived notions of who's living in your neighborhoods and what the potential damage that they could do is. You know, our biggest challenge is not the residents who live in those homes. Our biggest challenge is, as Counsel LeBrie suggested, is the staff who work in those homes because we do experience a high turnover and we do experience staff who don't always respect some of the norms with, of the neighborhood, like parking appropriately or not having loud music flaring when the first warm day comes in April. These are all problems we've always been willing to address, but if anyone is looking for a list of group homes in the city of Chicagoe, it's nonexistent and I'm hard-pressed to tell you how you'd ever get it. So I will be at the public safety meeting, I'll be happy to participate, but there are a lot of preconceived notions that just aren't true and that's unfortunate.
Thank you. So most of this will be taken up in the committee, but I'll let Counsel Ziegnerowski speak one time.
Yeah. Just one comment. I went through this a while ago about group homes and I had the building commissioner there. The only thing I would ask that the makers of this order try to get somebody from the state there or somebody high up that can discuss the rules and regulations of group homes in our community or anyplace else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of sending it? Opposed? And the motion passes.
Okay. We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, isolated stop sign Blanchard Street.
Counsel Costello.
Motion that the order be received and referred to the DPW for review of the stop sign and signal lights at Blanchard Street at the corner, at the intersection of Britton Street in regards to a stop sign.
You'll have to send that to ordinance.
And the, and the, and the order will be sent to the ordinance committee. Thank you.
We're going to send it to ordinance committee for a public hearing.
The ordinance takes its first reading and is referred to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
Got it, Jim.
Yeah.
Okay. On the motion.
Basically, I've gotten inquiries from the constituents that on these particular intersection, that there are people that are just running and not stopping at the intersection. Several constituents feel that the best way to resolve this is a stop sign to be put there. In regards to Britton Street, it is a busy street. Last week, I went out and counted cars. And on June 30th, from four to five, there were 127 cars an hour. Then on July 1st, I went back out again and it was from five to six and there were about 122 cars per hour. So Britton Street is a busy street, so many constituents feel that at that intersection there should be a stop sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you include in that one to send it to the engineering?
Okay. And engineering as well.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? And the motion passes.
A. We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, one-way street, Old Lyman Road.
Counsel Costello.
Okay. Motion that this proposed ordinance go to the ordinance subcommittee with the request that the city engineer be present.
Motion made in second that the order be received and take its first reading and sent to the ordinance committee for a public hearing and the engineer. On the motion.
This is something that the board acted upon not that long ago, within the last five to six weeks, where residents from Old Lyman Road came to the ordinance subcommittee as well as the city council. And the residents that are on a section of Old Lyman Road, which is about 16 feet wide in some sections, wanted it to be a one-way street. The one-way street was granted. Now there is a group of people who weren't notified, but they didn't have to be notified according to Attorney Garvey because on this particular issue, there is no public notification like there would be for a zone change. So there was a public hearing, it was granted to be one-way, but I do feel it would be fair for the other people that didn't have to be notified, but to give them a second chance to come in here and meet with the ordinance subcommittee and discuss their viewpoints in regards to that section of Old Lyman Road because they have a different point of view and they should be heard. But I, in discussing this with President Laflamme, there seems to be a lot of confusion in regards to who gets notified where and when. And I was wondering if we could try to correct that because in this particular case, because of this, this particular issue, the fire department didn't have to be notified. This is not a zone change, this isn't a special permit. So there's information out there saying, well, gee, why wasn't I notified? Well, in this particular case, legally, you don't have to because of the type of request it is. But I'm asking the city council to allow the other people to come in, even though legally they didn't have to be notified, and have a hearing in regards to what they have to say in regards to the ordinance subcommittee. Thank you.
Could we add the fire department to that?
Okay. Thank you.
For traffic.
But normally we don't have the fire department on something like that. Is that correct?
Well, it's, if it's, it's up to the counselor because
Okay.
It's up to you or if someone wants.
I would be, I would be in favor of that.
For response, for being, they had to go around.
That's correct.
Counsel Dobass.
Thank you. I just, I just want to commend Counselor Costello for, for holding this, this second hearing. This is a difficult issue that she had to deal with and I know that, you know, she did what she thinks is right and, you know, I support that and I'll support the word counselor on, you know, what she wants to do, you know, and for people watching, I mean, she's giving, you know, the people who are against this a chance to, you know, to be heard. And I think that's important and significant, you know, so I hope our constituents appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Ziegnerowski.
To the counselor and the makers of this order, are you saying you want to make that entire street one-way?
No, no, no. This would be only, actually, there was a discussion earlier with myself and Attorney Garvey in regards to how to word this particular request because this particular proposal is for one-way only where it is now, from Anson Street to the intersection of Britton Street, which is about five houses. So there's not going to be, this particular ordinance doesn't change it. So I asked Attorney Garvey, can we make an amendment to say, for tonight's purposes, can we have it a two-way street? And the answer was, and I appreciate Attorney Garvey's legal response, he said, yes, you can, but you don't have to. You can leave it as it is legally and everybody can come in and discuss either their position as one-way in that small section of Old Lyman or to change the one-way and go back to two ways. Is that correct, Attorney Garvey?
Frank, so, exactly. So.
Can you pull your mic up, please?
So that, that is true. So we in committee can hear both the proponents and opponents and depending upon the will of the committee, you can revise the ordinance in committee, which will then come back to the full council for final vote. So this gives the neighborhood and neighbors and anyone who may be interested in this item, the idea that we'll be discussing this particular issue and if they want to come in to discuss it, we'll hear the pros, the cons, and ultimately the committee's going to have to decide specific language once we take those positions into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Garvey.
So I guess the, what your answer is, there's some that want to keep it one-way and some that want to go back and depending upon the result of the conversation that we have in committee, the committee will decide what the specific language will be for your consideration at the following city council meeting.
Thank you. We'll take it up in committee.
The only thing I ask is that you would notify the police department to be at that meeting also.
Thank you.
Is that friendly?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Counselors.
The Crampets.
Through the chair to Counselor Costello, are the one-way signs already put up or?
Yes, they are.
Okay. They're still in place? They weren't removed?
Oh, no. Nothing's changed and Attorney Garvey has made sure of that until we have further discussions.
Okay. We'll take the rest up in committee.
Thank you.
We may not, we may not have to have it sent to committee. Okay. All in favor? Opposed? And the motion passes.
Just a point of information, we are sending it to committee.
Yeah, for first reading.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, commercial vehicles excluded on Britton Street.
Counsel Costello.
A motion made to exclude commercial vehicles on Britton Street, the east side of Memorial Drive. This would be commercial vehicles excluded and we would send this to the ordinance subcommittee?
Correct. Motion made in second that the order be received, take its first reading and refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing.
And send it to the traffic, send it to the city engineer for a traffic study.
Is that a?
That's friendly, yes.
Okay. Motion and add the engineer for a traffic study. On the motion, you just went through the motion. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? And the motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, parking prohibited between signs, Thomas Street.
Counsel Koushain.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading and be sent to the ordinance subcommittee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second that the order be received and take its first reading and refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
Take it up in committee.
Take it up again. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? And the motion passes.
We have an ordinance to add to the following in schedule, handicap parking on 19 Hope Street.
Counsel Koushain.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading and be sent to the ordinance subcommittee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second that the order be received and take its first reading and refer to the ordinance committee for a public hearing and the handicap commission.
And the city engineer.
And the city engineer. On the motion.
Take it up in committee.
Take it up again. Any other comments? Seeing none? All in favor? And the motion passes.
We have an application for a new zone change from business A to business B for 4,877 square feet of property located at 499 Montgomery Street for creating one contiguous zoning district for an entire parcel to allow for further development. Jeffrey NATO.
Counsel, Counsel Ballack here.
A motion to receive the new special permit application, refer the zoning subcommittee and planning board for a public hearing.
Motion made in second that the order be received and sent to the zoning committee for a public hearing and planning. On the motion.
On the motion, we'll take this up in committee.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? And the motion passes.
An application for a new special permit under section 275 dash 21, sorry, dash 27 dash one of the municipal zoning ordinance for the purpose of construction and installation of a 120-foot-tall monopole tower located at 939 Chicagoe Street, installation of a wireless communication facility. 939 Chicagoe Street, Blue Sky Towers LLC.
Counsel Ballack here.
Motion to receive the new special permit application, refer the zoning subcommittee, planning department, engineering department, building department for a public hearing.
Motion made in second that the application for a special permit be received, sent to zoning, planning, engineering and
Building department.
And building department for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, we'll take this up in committee.
Take it up in committee. Any other comments? All in favor? Opposed? The motion passes. And that's it.
That's it.
Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, you know, reflecting back on Counsel Ziegnerowski's comments about getting somebody from the state, I can certainly try to arrange that and explain the licensing process and that of the overlay mapping process to ensure there's not oversaturation of, and I hate to call them group homes because I think they are people's homes, but group homes in respective neighborhoods throughout the city. Although there's no requirement that the state disposes of this information, I'm sure they'll be happy to send a representative and I'm sure I can reach out to somebody to help facilitate that conversation. But group homes are an essential part of all neighborhoods. They allow for the integration of people with developmental, Department of Health, Department of Children and Family, and Department of DYS Youth to be ingrained in our communities to have an opportunity at a better life. And I think that that's an important factor that goes into all of the discussions we have within the community because there would be no other place for people to go if they were condemned from neighborhoods and/or certain municipalities or certain geographical areas contained within those neighborhoods. So I really look forward to that meeting and I hope it's a conversation that could advance a better understanding of what human services providers do and that role the state plays and how we cite these programs and I'm looking forward to it. And I just, I just hope it's productive and it's not accusatory in nature and we can certainly find a common ground to understand the plight of some of these residents who would otherwise, you know, have no other place to live if it wasn't for the nonprofit and/or state-operated communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Lopez.
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Koushain.
All set.
Thank you. Counsel Ziegnerowski.
Yes, I'd just like to remind everybody, you see something, say something, call the police department. You see what's going on around the country. We have another massive shooting from some guy up on a rooftop, killed many people. Certainly somebody knows something. So if you see something, don't hesitate to call the So, if you see something, don't hesitate to call the police department. Saying that, like I do every July, I wish everybody a happy birthday from Mr. Keith Rattell, Mr. Jim Tilletson, our secretary Agnes, our administrative assistant, and also Frank Laflamme is coming up in July also. So, happy birthday to all you guys.
Counsel Balak.
And ladies.
Counsel Balak here.
Thank you, Mr. President. As per usual, I want to thank the healthcare workers for the great job they're doing during the COVID crisis. It's still around, so let's please be mindful and try to be as helpful as we can. Again, I want to talk about the Ukraine crisis. This is, again, an extremely dangerous situation. Please pray for peace and if possible, please donate to a local organization regarding Ukrainian crisis. Speeding, again, please slow down. Kids are out of school. As was referenced earlier through the mayor's comments, the proposed speed tables are coming on Front Street, hopefully within the next two weeks. And last but not least, and most importantly, I want to wish my wife a happy anniversary to my dear wife. It's been quite a journey. Thank you.
Counsel Tilletson.
I just want to react a little bit to the public input that was given this evening. I thought the lady did a great job, but I'd like to explain to her our dilemma. Our dilemma is the quality of life issues versus trying to create jobs and, and keep the taxes down for the homeowner so that all the burden doesn't fall on someone who lives in a home. It's, it goes back, if we can get businesses, then the tax burden will go shifted the other direction. Right now, we have less than about 1% of our expenses, I mean, income rather, was due to expand and expanding of our businesses and so forth. And if we continue to go in that direction, we're going to drive a lot of people out of their homes because they won't be able to afford the taxes. And that's a dilemma that we face every time we have these issues that come before us. They're not easy. They're all, I mean, I enjoy the quality of life issues as much as anybody does, but I don't live very far from Memorial Drive and you're right, they go up and down that street sometimes with the speed limit or without the speed limit and they just go. And the only way we control them is we have speed stop signs and lights all the way down, but some of them go right through the lights. So, I just want to explain to you that every congressman, every councilman on this dais up here or table or whatever you want to call it, is, faces that dilemma because we come down to the point where our growth is very small and we have to be, somebody's going to get affected when you change the quality of life and you put something here that wasn't there before and they've lived there 30 or 40 years and all of a sudden their environment is different, you know, it's a tough choice to make for us. And I think if you were sitting up here with us, you'd, you'd have the same dilemma. And the quality of life issues is certainly one of our priorities and that's why some of them get turned down and they don't, we don't pass them because of the quality of life. But we got to be careful because we don't want to become the city that turns everybody down because then who's going to apply to come here? So, it's a catch 22 in a way. But anyway, you really hit a spot for me and I appreciate your comments. I thought you did it very articulately and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counsel DeBree.
Yeah, I just want to thank the Parks Department and City of Chicagabeer for putting on a great fireworks show. It was spectacular, but I, I believe that the grand finale went off about 10 minutes before the end of the fireworks and people thought it was over and most people left, vacated the park at that time while the fireworks were still going on. But it was a great show and I commend everybody, all the workers and the Park Department, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Roy.
Yeah, I would just like to echo the comments made earlier about the crosswalks on Granby Road. I brought it up a couple of years back and nothing was ever done about it, but I still get people to request crosswalks on Granby Road. It's, I think it's an important issue. And I just want to make a congratulations to Kim Williams, I mean, Kim Roy and Rachel Williams, my daughter, I didn't even know her name. And happy anniversary to Kathy and George, many more, I hope, and this is your city. Take pride in it.
Counsel Crampits.
Happy birthday to all the July birthday babies, including our own Counselor Zigorowski and congratulations to George and Kathy. And I did want to say the fireworks were spectacular. They, they went with a different vendor and I think there was, you know, more bang for the buck that the city got. And also wanted to thank those hearty souls that marched in the parade, the patriotic parade and lined the streets to watch it, you know, it was a pretty hot and humid day. So, I think that kind of, you know, kept the turnout kind of low, but it was the first time of doing it and hopefully it will continue to grow year after year. So, I want to thank all of those folks involved. So, thank you.
Counsel Costello.
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Tilletson, Counselor Dobaz, and Attorney Garvey in regards to their guidance and their input in the Old Lyman Road issue to make sure that we got a second hearing and that everything was done legally and updated. I attended many of the mayor's neighborhood meetings and it was a learning experience. Traffic and speeding was a predominant issue in all the wards. So, a few of us in Ward Nine got together and occasionally we do a standout and I believe one of President Laflamme's relatives has one of these and it's a slow down, this is our, this is our, this is our neighborhood. So, I had a standout today from roughly four to five. We've had standouts before and I've been distributing these around the neighborhood. So, if anybody's interested, you know, just let me know, but we do get a lot of waves and we get a lot of thumbs up. So, that's a positive reaction to the people driving by, letting us know that they're happy. We're bringing to the attention of the public, please slow down. Thank you.
Thanks. Counsel McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to acknowledge and congratulate my constituent Barbara Galindo on her appointment this evening. Barbara has served the city admirably for a number of years and I know she will continue to, so a great congratulations to her. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Dobaz.
Thank you. A couple of meetings coming up. We have a utilities meeting, July 11th, 6:30 in the city council chambers. We have a planning board meeting regarding the Burnett Road truck stop, July 14th, 7:00 PM also in the chambers. I want to thank the mayor's office for hosting neighborhood meetings. You know, I knew my ward was going to be tough. We were, you know, we have a lot of outspoken residents and I want to thank, there were six counselors there besides myself, counselors McCullough, Costello, Kushein, and at-large counselors Laflamme, Tilletson, and Zigorowski were also in attendance. So, I appreciate all the counselors who showed up to listen to Ward Six residents. Thank you. And I want to thank the mayor's office for hosting it. I know it was a tough meeting. The fire and the, I thank you to all the residents who came out. I really appreciate it. It was great to hear from residents. I did attend the fireworks. It was an excellent show. I attend every year and I want to thank the mayor's office for that. And I want to thank the mayor and Counselor Laflamme and my school committee rep Shumsky are working on some, some issues on Moro Drive, so I want to thank them for their work as well. The only thing, Mr. President, I have National Night Out listed as August 1st. If you can let the public know the time, I don't think we meet again before National Night Out. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll let them know. Thank you. If it's a little bar, I'd like to say a few words. I just want to, I got a receipt, an email from one of the commissioners from the golf commission and where they're very, very proud that they're, they're, they're holding, starting tomorrow at 7:00 AM and it's a three-day, the young golfers to complete in the American Junior Golf Association tournament from all over the country for the golfers, for the young kids. So, this is something that they put on and it puts us on the map again for Chicagabeer hosting this event. So, thank you, commissioners, for bringing it to Chicagabeer. With that said, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion made in second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion passes.[1787.65]